Litchfield Street and crossing car parks. And in the absence of the mayor, this will be moved by councillor Mandy, since he missed out on one earlier. And seconded councillor Clearwater. Oh, actually, it might not be seconded by councillor Clearwater, councillor Gotta. Okay, any discussion on this Litchfield Street and crossing car parks?
Mayor, I'm seconding on the basis that we have agreement to not support the first part of those recommendations. I'm just trying to find them on the page they're on.
Central city areas.
I would have thought that if we just don't accept 4.1, but in fact, the remaining recommendations support the parking at the crossing in this particular area, but that in fact, it isn't a given that future car parking would proceed on the same basis as prior to the earthquake.
Okay, can I suggest then that I put 6.1 separately from 6.2 to 6.5?
Is it 4.1? It's on page 112, isn't it?
113.
Oh, sorry.
I'm on page 113 at the bottom, 6.1.
But 6.1.
Yeah, so what I'm going to suggest is that this be amended anyway to, in these two key central city areas, because we're really only dealing with these two. But I'm very happy to put that separately, so that we can debate that separately. Okay?
I think that covers it.
You're happy now? Okay, so it's moved and seconded. Councillor Longstaff?
I'd sort of point out, and I'd like to go on record as putting this out, is that the car parking levels pre-earthquake was not enough. And I believe that to reinstate to pre-quake levels is a minimum, and I would not want to see that removed from these discussions.
Okay, so in that case, what I'll do is put, I'll put the 6.2 to 6.5 anyway separately, and then I'll put 6.1 separately, okay? And the amendment, does somebody wish to move this amendment in these two? Actually, I'm happy to move that. Seconded councillor. So everybody's happy with that? We just want to place that on record? Okay. Any further discussion on the issue? It's a relatively big issue. Right, councillor Clearwater?
I just want to make the point to councillors that in fact, it's important to clarify which areas we're talking about. The council's strategic plan itself is quite clear that in fact, the community asked for significant changes in their current transport systems, and with a move to more pedestrian and cycle-friendly city to happen. And that is why I asked for that amendment.
Okay, right. Councillor Goff?
Just a quick clarification there. So the only change that I'm seeing is that you've just changed to pre-earthquake levels in the central city, just to simply these two being Litchfield and the crossing. So the way I really see that is that's just reaffirming that in this key area, and it is a key area because it's adjacent to the retail precinct. So it's probably better for parking in the central city, as far as I can see. Makes sense.
Just to say that that is the case, the public did want to see a more cycle and pedestrian-friendly city. It is an accessible city, which actually requires all modes of transport to be catered for. And the preference for actually driving to an area is actually a lot greater than any other mode of transport. We can try, or we like to force people on the public transport to do their business, but at this point in time, we have to make sure we cater for the majority, which is the private mode of vehicle.
2.5, those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed? Any? Carried, thank you. The next item is the accessible city, and the recommendations are at the bottom of page 119. Moved councillor Clearwater, seconded councillor Chin. Any discussion? Councillor Johansson?
Thank you. Just some questions of staff. One is, I see that it envisages that there'll be no consultation or engagement with affected stakeholders on anything agreed in the central city recovery plan. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, I don't think that's the case. What we're proposing to do here is, I guess, not relitigate the consultation that was undertaken through the inaccessible city. But we need to also ensure that we comply with our requirements under the Local Government Act, and those are many and varied. So there is a requirement for consultation with affected and interested parties. But what the paper proposes is really to bring to councillors, basically to workshop it with councillors in early February, and then agree on a way forward. And part of that way forward will certainly be consultation with the community.
Can I just raise that I think the local community board that's most affected by this should be involved in that workshop, given that there will be a number of residents associations that are affected by these proposals, that that community board deals with on a day-to-day basis. Is that possible?
Certainly in terms of 4.10, it envisages involving the community board.
Second question is, just I see that you want a recommendation that we proceed to early stakeholder consultation on the draft concept design for Oxford Terrace-Chilum Street, but we don't, to the best of my knowledge, have not seen those draft concept plans. So do we have a draft concept design? And should we be saying that before we approve to go out with it?
Through you, Madam Chair, the concept design has been prepared at the moment. All we have is Appendix 2, which is basically outline what is proposed through that swap. Part of it is envisaged within inaccessible city. It's about basically closing off that portion of Oxford Terrace adjacent to the Avon River for general through traffic. It's about that portion of Chilum Street, which is currently two-way between Antigua and Hagley, basically making that one-way in a west-east direction. And for St Asif Street, which is currently two-way again between Antigua and Hagley, basically making that two-way. So it's basically a change to the transport system, but the detailed, or the concept plans haven't been prepared as yet.
They have, or they haven't?
They're basically being prepared at the moment. So it was initial consultation on the proposals, which was outlined in Appendix 2.
If I may, Deputy Mayor, I'm just concerned that we're going out for public consultation at the end of the year, in a time when people are away on holiday, we haven't seen the plans, and there's very limited opportunity for engagement.
Can I suggest that these plans, because I see they are actually in the appendices, but they're relatively limited, could they possibly come to the next council meeting, which is surprise, next week?
I'll just check and make sure that they are going to be ready. I presume they are, so certainly if they are, they can be prepared for that meeting.
And then we can have a look at them before they go out too. Could we possibly ever devise a word that isn't stakeholder? Just, it's not important at the moment, but just possibly have something?
I'm sure the Strategy and Planning Board can come up with something, Madam Chair.
Look at vegetarian holder.
Changes or amendments that anybody wants, before I put the, or any other speakers? If not, I'll put the recommendations. Those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed? Carried. The next one is the Hotel Grand Charles, a very simple move that enables some fairly major development to get underway. I'm very happy to move it. Seconded councillor Scandret.
If I can ask a question of staff before we put this to a vote. Would we be able to get just some explanation, please, around exactly what happens as described in paragraphs 2.1 and 2.2? We've got a flap coming up on the footpath, we've got a building moving up to 700 millimetres in each direction. I'd appreciate just some explanation of exactly how this is going to work.
Well, I'm not to pretend to be a structural engineer, but yeah, exactly what you've described, it happens actually in a major earthquake. The construction of the foundations allows the building to move in that way. And if it actually would push against the footpath, and it would just flip up the plate that actually would be in the footpath as it would normally be. So actually, it just rides on some rollers, in terms of the building.
So if I was a pedestrian, walking by this building at the time this thing happened, what would I experience?
In terms of, well, you'd feel the shaking of the ground if it was a major earthquake.
Yeah, sure.
In actual fact, I think the flipping of the steel, sort of chamber lids, would be the least of your problems. I think it'd be more about what else is coming around your head, and anything else falling down on you, rather than the plate itself moving.
So the way the plate moves hasn't got the potential to cause any public injury?
Very unlikely, and certainly not a serious issue.
And that's something that flips up, or that moves horizontally?
It depends on its design. Sometimes they will just flip out, just with the movement of the building, and sometimes they might be hinged to come out.
And this would happen on the path of the footpath? A person could be walking along at that time?
Exactly. But you've got to remember, it's purely in a major earthquake event.
I take your point about that may well be the least of your worries. Thank you.
That in relation to 6.3, that the working party be the mayor or deputy mayor, and any other, I was going to say any other councillor wandering by, but any other committee chair? Just so that we can easily get a group together to deal with these issues, so that we are not holding up very minor things that are required in order to achieve development.
This is actually relooking at the whole policy.
All right, okay.
But yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, well, in that case, shall we suggest whoever's available from the mayor, deputy mayor, and the chair of strategy and policy? Okay? No problem? Yanni?
Just on this, have you seen the new design? And does it, is it just create a narrow cavern like it was before? Or is it actually going to be, I mean, is it coming into our airspace above?
I'm not aware that it's coming into the airspace above.
So, I mean, I just think, you know, we tried to get some lanes as part of our central city plan, and it would seem this was one of the worst lanes in the city in terms of public amenity. Are we going to get any improvement, or have we discussed that with the developers?
I presume things are working with the developers and going through the urban design panel, I would imagine. Hasn't we seen actually detailed designs of the buildings as such as yet?
Okay, councillor East?
Just the membership of that working party.
Would you like to be on it?
Policy is sort of in my portfolio.
Okay, so councillor, I'm sure we could add you to it. I don't think it's major.
Yeah, I would imagine, yeah.
In fact, mayor and deputy mayor might be very happy to have you guys do it. So of two, of any of those four people, including you?
Yeah.
Okay? And we had a seconded, didn't we? We haven't? A seconded by councillor Livingston. She's been amazingly quiet. Okay. I'll put that with that amendment. I don't need to put the amendment separately, do I? No. Okay, those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed? Carried. The next item, the Port Hills Slope Stability Information Paper, which is just a motion to be received. Councillor Turner moves. Councillor Clearwater seconds. Any comment? Councillor Clearwater, Yanni?
In relation to the submission that was made this morning, in the deputation, I just think I would find it helpful, as a new councillor, if full information was given to us as councillors in relation to mitigation structures, and information that council has on those, so that we can be really clear about what is available for residents. And I'm thinking particularly of those who they referred to today, who, you know, there's a lot of stress attached for these residents, particularly those who were green and have now been moved to red. So I would ask if that information could be made available to us?
So exactly what wording do you want? Or do you just want to seek that information being made available?
I'd just like it to be made available, yeah.
No problem?
Sorry, I just clarify with councillor Clearwater, what information you're seeking?
Well, it's particularly in relation to any mitigation protection features that has already been considered for the Port Hills. And basically, I know they're well-known, but it would be particularly what might actually work in some particular areas, by way of the buns, or whether it's actually tying the rocks down, that kind of thing. And how many residents might, you know, be affected by those if they were to be put into place. I'm well aware that Sera have ruled them out, but I'm just wondering if the information that we have could be made available so we can see where it might fit?
We can certainly make the information that we have available, and there's generic information around the types of mitigation options that exist, but I don't believe that there'll be information that takes that down to individual property level that says the detailed optionality for a property or group of properties. But we're happy to provide whatever information we have, and whatever information Sera makes available to us.
I had a question. Given that council had resolved to contribute 50%, on the basis that all rockfall property acquired that adjoins existing council reserves would be vested in council, how can the cost-sharing agreement doesn't give effect to that and gives away 50% of the properties? Does anyone, does the acting chief executive or any staff know?
Can you just clarify, I'll endeavour, Madam Chair, to answer, but can you just clarify what the giving away of 50% of the properties means?
As part of the cost-sharing agreement, signed by the mayor and the CEO, it said that the Crown agrees to transfer up to 50% of the grassland area adjoining city council reserves, in terms of the rockfall. But the resolution that we had agreed to was that all of the land would be transferred across to adjoining reserves, where adjoined reserves. So we've gone from 100% to 50%, and I can't understand where that came from, because it's, it just seems to have been put into the final binding agreement against a resolution that council had already made. So I'm looking at page 127, 3.5. And there's no, I mean, there's no mention in this report about the cost-share agreement. But I think it would be, I mean, I think we need to be aware of what the actual, why there's such a huge difference, and what the rationale behind it was.
No, no, I don't know. I'm happy to go and find out. I mean, the intention always from the council, and my knowledge is more around 3.5 than is around the details of the cost share that might be relevant here, but the intention was always to be, as council, to be careful about what land we actually acquired as a result of the red zone offer, because not all land, whether it adjoined or didn't adjoin a reserve, was actually useful to us. So while that, certainly that resolution's there, I mean, it was always going to be a solution that would be negotiated as and when we finally knew what the red zone really looked like. So that's my recollection of that. Happy to go away and see if I can clarify the relationship with the cost-share agreement.
Okay, and the second question is, given that the council had agreed to contribute up to 50% of the net costs for mitigation, and given that council staff were involved in the zoning review that came back and said that we will no longer be able to remove the red zone around where we do mitigation, what is, how does, where does that leave us in terms of us funding mitigation to happen in the hills? And what is the process ultimately that's going to make that final determination about what people can do with their land?
I mean, the council has an offer, a resolution around allowing for individual mitigation, and I think, as far as I understand, continues to stand by that offer. People may choose to achieve mitigation. However, as I understand, the government's decision is that that won't remove the red zone notation, because they believe in general, the risk remains. It may be, we may be able to ameliorate that risk on individual properties, but not remove the risk in general. So that's, as I understand, the principles that the government have used in establishing that. So someone may continue to live happily, get a building consent, get a mitigation work, but live with the fact that they are in a red zone. In the same way that people live inside other hazard management areas.
Just for clarification, I presume that basically through our district plan review, that will give people the ability to either remain in their property or not, based on the level of risk and hazard. So we shouldn't be too focused on red zone, green zone. What we should be focused on is, what does our district plan say? And what does that allow? And if people can have mitigation in a prohibited, oh, sorry, in an area that our district plans allow, I presume that's okay.
Well, provided, yes, it provided, ultimately, the tool that will manage this in the long term will be the district plan. And that will set in place hazard management areas, and we've had some discussion about those. And they will control, well, they will set standards for activity, and people coming into new properties will need to meet those. One of those is likely to be around mitigation. So the red zone in that sense still remains there largely as a zone in which the government is offering to purchase people out of their properties, or because of heightened levels of risk. Now, the red zone will correlate closely to our planning zones, and that higher level of risk will be related in the thresholds people need to meet if they're developing property. But they could still continue to satisfy, if they can continue to satisfy the council in a land use sense, and if they can continue to satisfy the council in terms of our obligations under the Building Act, then potentially people can continue to live there.
The submitters this morning, and their neighbours, could choose to do, could choose that the rock mitigation be done and remain there?
Well, at the moment, as I would understand it, that mitigation would need to occur, they would need to be able to either mitigate that on their own property, or presumably, if it's an adjoining property, negotiate privately with an adjoining property owner to create that level of mitigation. So that mitigation may be around removal. It may be around putting in forms of engineering structures to protect their dwellings, correct?
Just finally, so if you accept that the district plan review is going to be the time when people will know whether they can remain there or not, or whether they can build or not, what are we doing in regards to infrastructure in the red zone that has a potential future use because of the district plan? Are we, have we got a stop-gap measure in place so that Sera's not pulling all the services out of the red zone where we've got people paying rates, remaining, living, possibly building in the future?
Well, the issue around the infrastructure in the red zone is councils, because the infrastructure and the roads, the networks, the pipes, are council's decision to make.
Just so I'm clear, I thought that we agreed to give the red zone to the government, property and land that we owned, as part of the cost share. Is that separate from the Port Hills?
I'm not, well, Jane maybe, I'll also answer that.
I think it's separate from the Port Hills, but we'll follow up and check.
Just foreshadow a motion at the appropriate time. Just that, that the council asks staff to investigate community-based mitigation of rockfall hazards in the Port Hills, and identify areas that are more cost-efficient than the zoning purchase. In response to this morning's presentation.
Yeah, okay, so a second for that? Councillor Turner? Any discussion on that motion?
Just to give some context, I think when council originally decided to allow mitigation, it thought that it would be able for individuals to go through that process, put together the case, get the geotech advice, and get some progress. The reality of what's happened is it's been such a complicated process for people to go through, and given the zoning review, it's created such an uncertainty. I think now, really what we've heard this morning is that there's a huge advantage to council being the leader in this regard. It's not uncommon, we did it for Lucas Lane, we did it, we did some work for the Gondola, and I think we should be doing work around the areas where we can actually cost-effectively mitigate the risk, enable people to live in their houses, given, especially given the housing crisis that we have, and considering the financial issues and challenges we also have as a council. So what we heard this morning was, it actually is possible and cost-effective to save some communities, not all, but some, in certain areas to enable people to live and remain in the housing that is currently there, undamaged, and perfectly feasible to be lived in. I think we need to, as an organisation, be proactive in this regard. We've tried to leave it to the local individuals to do, and that hasn't worked to the degree that some of us might have hoped. So I really think it's important that we do this work, that we're proactive in identifying these areas and solutions, and that we move forward as a council.
Yeah, I certainly believe that we've got a responsibility to the people that are living on the hills in these houses, where mitigation work would be both cost-effective and effective, and particularly bearing in mind our obligations to the government under the zoning, where we can be saving funds for council and giving a better outcome for residents. That's something that we must, in my view, be taking serious and looking at. And I support what councillor Johansson has said, but I just wanted to add a few more comments. We mustn't forget that the people on the hills have been dealing with not only multiple hazards, but multiple challenges in terms of their dealings with central government, in terms of their dealings with council. I recall, as a person that lives on the hills, when council passed the original resolution around mitigation features, it was acknowledged by the mayor at that time that it wouldn't be an easy process to follow, and it may not be easy to come up with something that worked. We've heard from residents this morning, who have, who believe that they can come up with something that works, and I think we owe it to those people to give them an opportunity to be able to do that. And one final point, a lot of these people living on the hills are in houses in unique locations, very often unique properties, in microclimates, in areas which are quite unique. And the situation on the hills is very different than the situation on the flatland, where one piece of land may in fact, in some cases, be quite similar to another piece of land. On the hills, almost every piece of land, in terms of its aspect, its view, its microclimate, and so on, is quite unique, which are some of the very good reasons why people are emotionally and physically attached to the land that they're on. So I'm, yeah, obviously very supportive of this.
And there is a subsequent paper in here on memorials as well. Okay, put that. These are all moved by councillor Cotter and seconded by councillor Chen. Okay? Unless they object. I'll put that 6.1 recommendation, those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed? Carried? Sorry, do you want to speak?
Just to 6.1, briefly, it's just that, to me, that the recommendation didn't really capture what I felt was the essence of the deputation, and that was that they were quite happy to do a lot of that work themselves, and it just seems to me like an order to Sarah to tidy it up, and that is not the intention.
Okay, so, yeah, and that the families be closely consulted on this work?
Yes.
So I think the request to Sarah was to take down the fence, put some basic grass in there, and then that the families wanted to be involved very much in the creation of a temporary memorial, and that it was obviously urgent before February 22nd, not just for the speaker, but for a lot of others as well, including the Japanese families.
So what will the process for that be? Is it just over to staff to organise?
Councillor Scandret, are you going to answer that question?
Well, what I was thinking, well, what I was thinking was that the families could go directly to Sarah. If Sarah now decided that they're going to take the fencing down and do something, that perhaps the families should direct, work directly with Sarah as it is under Sarah's control.
How would it be, unless, is there a staff member that actually is working in this area? If not, how would it be on Monday when we meet with Sarah and CCDU if we ask them the process and get back to the, to Dr Alkasi?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
We'll just do that.
And I think that the, depending on what the families want, it could be thrown open to lots of people to participate in that. I myself would be happy to go down and do something, I'm sure a lot of us would, because I think it's really, really important.
There's another clause in the agenda too, on temporary memorials, where people haven't been able to do them. Hello? Cool. Okay, so we've just passed 6.1. Do you want to just finish these and then you can, okay? 6.2, the Majestic Theatre. Councillor Johansson?
Just on this, we were going to get some feedback around what had happened previously. We've already sent two letters. And I'm happy to support this, I do think there's an urgency about it, and I wonder if we also need to resend the letter repeating our request. So I thought we were going to seek a meeting, but we were also going to reaffirm our request in writing to Sarah.
Okay, so we're meeting with them on Monday?
Right.
I think we absolutely need to meet with them on a range of things very, very regularly, and that should be one of the outcomes of Monday's meeting, because it's crazy that this is happening by a different organisation than the city council.
But the issue previously has been that it's not Sarah that are making the decisions, it's the ministers. So because we can't meet with the ministers, we can't seem to get progress around these issues. So like, that's why council last time resolved to write to the Minister of Culture and Heritage to meet about heritage recovery, because we were concerned that we were repeatedly raising it with Sarah, but not getting any traction.
Okay, so the recommendation here is that we meet with Sarah, we're meeting with them on Monday, why don't we work through a process with them at that stage, so that all of those issues that are coming to us that should be going to Sarah are actually dealt with properly? Is that okay?
So that our staff respond to the previous requests that have been made and we were at before Monday, so that we can be informed when we go into the meeting.
Yep. Do you know who that is? Yep, okay. Thank you. With that addition, 6.2, you are? You're right. Okay. I'll put that, those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed? Carried. 6.3, Riverside Heritage Garden with the committee recommendation there. Moved and seconded by those same people who moved and seconded everything before. Okay? No speakers? Councillor Cotter?
In clarification, I think that that needs to be noted there, perhaps in the last line, to enable this to occur and to prevent slash delay demolition, because that's, will seem to be a sense of urgency about that. I just think that should be really noted in the minutes. Yes, thank you.
I also thought that we were going to make a staff member available to work with them on the concept, so I think it'd be really good to have a champion within the organisation that can work with this group and help develop some of the plans. Is that, is that something that we can identify? Yeah, but I just think it would be useful to have a staff person, actually like a champion within the staff, to be able to coordinate that work. With Jane, okay? That's fine.
That what support is available, I'm assuming that will come back to us at some stage?
They did actually mention money.
Yes.
Could that be specified, or do you think that's?
Support, support often means money.
Support is okay, alright.
Yeah, okay. Put that, it's moved and seconded by councillor Cotter and Chen, who had a whole spate of them there. Those in favour, please say aye. Oh, sorry, did you want to speak, Andrew? Those in favour, please say aye. Those opposed? Carried, the part B items for information. Six, nine, and part C. Any discussion? And now you can have your real mayor.